All right, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the adjourned City Council meeting of June 9th, 2020 at 4:00 PM here in the City Council chambers. And at this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 4:03. And could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Chief, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Director Maloney?
Here.
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda, do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay. Mrs. Santos, second. Moved by Freya, second by Santos to approve the agenda stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, carried, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items and the public may submit their comments by submitting a written statement by dropping it off to the utility payment box at City Hall at 520 J Street by mail or emailing the city clerk at LosBanos.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council meeting. Director Maloney, do we have any comments?
I have received no comments.
Thank you. I will now close, or those or anyone here who would like to make any public comments. Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and go on to consideration of appeal hearing regarding the decision to not grant a waiver of transient occupancy tax collected. Okay? And let's see, Ms. Williams, are you going, Ms. Williams, you're gonna make a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I just wanted to give you a little bit of history about the TOT, transient occupancy tax, what it is and how much it is and what fund it goes into. So, the state, the state of California's Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 7280, gives the authority to the cities to levy the transient occupancy tax, also known as the TOT. The city's administration of its TOT is codified in Title III, Chapter 13 of the Los Bannas Municipal Code, which was included with today's staff report. The code broadly defines the basic levy of TOT, including the levy, reporting, remitting penalties and audits. More specifically, the ordinance imposes a 10% tax on transients or guests for the privilege of occupancy in any hotel or motel within the city limits of Los Bannas. The tax is imposed on any person who rents lodging for a period of 30 days or less. The tax is paid to the operator of the hotel or motel at the time that the rent is paid. The hotel operator is required to collect the tax at the time the rent is paid and the operator must remit the tax to the city on a quarterly basis. If the tax is not remitted in a timely basis, the operator is subject to a penalty for delinquent payments. The penalty is 10% of the tax in addition to the amount of the tax and an additional 10% for every 30 days after that. The TOT is a pass-through payment. It is not permitted to be used by the operator of any hotel or motel for any purpose other than paying it to the city. To date, the city has collected a little over $300,000 in TOT for the current fiscal year, which was collected from nine hotels or motels in the city of Los Bannas. We currently have 10 that upheld the decision. And one of them is not currently operating, I believe it's under construction. 10 hotels, like I said, have appealed the city manager's determination. For the period ended March 31st, 2020, the city has collected $76,090.57. The TOT is a general tax and is therefore accounted for in the general fund. I did put on your desk a breakdown of the quarter ended March 31st, 2020. That was remitted by every single hotel on that list. So there is a breakdown how much each hotel paid for the quarter. March 19th, 2020 is when the stay-at-home order was issued by the Governor of California. The timeframe that this is for is for January 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2020. Therefore, the stay-at-home order had only been imposed for 12 days during the waiver request. In closing, this is a legislative-type decision. There is nothing in our ordinance that allows for a discount or waiver of the TOT and it is appropriate to legislatively amend the ordinance rather than waive the TOT. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions by council at this time? Not hearing any, we will now move on to the next phase. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, let's go ahead, Mrs. Lewis, there you go.
Thank you. Sonia, in the evaluation of this, were you able to determine whether or not a request like this has been made of any other city or if any other city has refunded any TOT taxes to businesses?
So, through the CSMO, there was a survey done and several cities answered. There were waiver requests or not, there were no waiver requests that I could find. Because it was really not permitted to anybody's support. However, there were several entities that...
They did request a deferral of their payments. The city of Pittsburgh denied the deferral. The city of Corona approved a waiver of the penalties and interest but did not extend the deadline or did not defer the payment but did waive the penalties for late payment. The Mission Viejo is not extending the deadline at this point in time. Oceanside did not offer or did not take the waiver request for penalties and they did not offer a referral or a deferral, sorry. Salinas did not, is not deferring payments. Pasadena is not granting extensions. Woodland did choose to defer payments by 30 days and the city of Merced deferred payments until July 31st.
Thank you.
Are there any payment and penalties at this time?
No, everybody made their payments on time.
Okay. All right, so this hearing is only dealing with the money that hasn't been collected and that's a 76, 90.57?
That money has actually been collected, but that's the same money that was requested to be waived.
To be waived?
To be waived. And so, the waiver was denied by the city manager and they're appealing that decision.
Okay. All right. So every hotel listed on this, or motel listed on this list right here is current with the money that's owed to the city?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Okay. So those representing, in this appeal hearing, those representing the various hotels, La Quinta Inn Suites, Best Western, Maple Inn Suites, Best Value Inn, Travel Lodge, Los Bannas Motel, La Plaza Inn, Holiday Inn, Sunstar Motel and Economy Inn, would they like to make a presentation? Is there anyone here who would like to do that? Yes, come forward, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the panel. My name is Doris Lovett. I'm the front desk manager for Best Western and I'm representing Best Western and I'll have a brief presentation and then I would like Mr. Sanjay to finish it, if that's okay, if that's permitted?
Okay, are you're just representing, I want to be straight here, you're just representing the Best Western?
Yes, and actually, yes, but it's kind of the whole package, not the package, but I'm actually explaining the history of how this came about and why we're requesting it. And I'm actually, I'm actually representing Best Western and Sanjay is for, is for La Quinta.
Okay, okay, so you're not representing the rest of the hotel manager? The hotels or motels that are listed here?
Well, I'll be the spokesperson, basically, but I'm basically for Best Western.
Okay, did they appoint you?
But it affects all of us, we all signed it.
I'm just trying to be clear.
Yeah.
Have they appointed, have all the hotels on this list that I have, have they appointed you as spokesperson for them?
I will be speaking on the behalf of Best Western and we had a letter and they all signed it, so I'm supposing that I would be representing?
Yes, because we were only allowed to.
Yes, because we were only allowed to.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
I just want to be clear.
Thank you. Okay, well, first of all, you know, this epidemic has affected all of us in all the businesses, especially the hotel business, because travel was basically cut. It affected airlines, it affected rental car places and because of travel. And in January, anyway, everything dies, basically. So after Christmas, restaurants, hospitality, everything kind of slows very down, very much. And January, that happened, February came, then the epidemic and our business, which is usually all year around 40 to 60 to up to 100%, is down to 25 to 40%. But our bills remain the same, we still have the mortgage, we still have the lights, we still have the gardener's, the pool guy, we still have everything. The only thing that's really been cut is our employees because of the lack of work. We've had to lay off someone, we've had to cut hours. Also, you know, our breakfast, we had to cut out the breakfast or our breakfast kind of dimension, but that's the only thing that's really been affected where we didn't have to put out costs, but everything else has remained the same. So then here comes March where normally we pick up, we have essential workers coming in. A lot of them we don't have because their travel got suspended. So I asked, I saw somebody from Caltrans the other day and I say, hey, I haven't seen you guys. What are you saying? They go, our travel's been suspended, we have to commute. So it has even affected our essential workers. So in the summer now, weddings have been canceled, funerals, anniversaries, reunions, Juneteenth. A lot of things have been canceled where people would come and stay with us. So what has happened is we, we signed, we wrote a letter, as you can see, on April 17th, we actually called and we asked, is it possible to waive the TOTS? And we had, no, we don't see anything like that, you know, we're not going to do it. So on April 21st, we decided to do a letter, see, see the mayor, to see maybe if somebody would take this into consideration, take it to, hey, what can we do to help them? And of course, again, it was denied. So as you can see, there was other steps, but May 5th is what I want to talk about. May 5th, we wrote a letter and we asked, if you cannot waive the TOTS and we will pay our TOTS, but is it possible to give us a 3% credit? Because out of these TOTS that we paid, we also paid a 3% too for all the transactions on those cards. For all, for all the credit cards, we paid a 3, 3.84% of that money, we actually had to pay for credit card transactions. And then we also asked about the 3%, we asked maybe if there could be a breakdown in payments. See, and I don't see this in the notes, but this is what we said on the, if you refer to your May 5th letter, or extend the due date for the second quarter and it says, any type of assistance would be greatly appreciated. We're asking, you might know programs that we can qualify for? You might can brainstorm to see what you, how you can help our businesses because if we get worse to worse and we can't make the small payroll now that we have, that we have to close our doors. It hurts the city, it hurts the essential workers, it hurts our families, our employees that are like family to us and the city won't get anything. And we don't want to come to that conclusion at all. There's also expenses that has came with this, such as having to order masks, extra gloves, a window shield, a fogger. Now we have to buy the foggers, which is like, I think, almost like $1,400. More sanitizers, also extra products, we have all that. So the other thing that we wanted to ask, one more thing, is... And I wrote it. Okay, so we wanted to, if you can even consider cutting for next quarter the TOTS percent, maybe not 10%, maybe 5% or, you know, like I said, even cutting a percentage of that or giving us a breakdown where we could pay monthly instead of quarterly. That would help or, and what we really would like is to pay with a credit card. And the way that, being able to pay with a credit card, and they said that's not in the system, but other, other counties and other cities are paying with their credit card. If we could pay with a credit card, at least our credit card would reimburse the 3% and that would help us, some kind of way where we can save to help our business stay thriving, to help the city and help our employees and our county. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Seja from La Quinta. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hello, Miss Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman and staff. Thank you for giving us opportunity to present ourself. Our, as she mentioned, our initial request was to waive. Of course, it's a pass-down, we collected that money from our customers and we are passing it down to the city. So it's understandable that it's hard to let go of any tax dollars. City also needs to perform and do their work, that's understandable. The reason for asking for that waiver, even though it's very unusual, is to help us in a time like this where we can just stay afloat. We went from anywhere from 60 to 80 to 60 to 90% occupancy, all of a sudden we are down to literally 10, 20% occupancy. We tried to keep our doors open, there are a lot of hotels around nation, around our state, around our Northern California, Southern California regions, they've closed their doors. They're literally completely closed. And if we were to also close our doors, it costs less money to keep our expenses, to keep our expenses down, it helps to close the doors. We choose not to close our doors, couple of reasons, or how many employees we can continue to employ that we value because they've been with us for a long time. We understand their situation. At the same time, we also help keeping our properties safe. There's someone there, someone come to the door, they open the door, we have staff changing every eight hours. So we choose to incur more expenses by keeping our doors open, but we do that. As our duty, it's also try to protect our assets. So in a time like this, as she mentioned, she, we had some suggestions that can be helpful to us. Waiving partly, maybe not full, would have been of great help, just like, you know, we all received some help from the government. It helped us, it will help us to stay afloat. It's, we are not closed down for just two months and three months that we have had. This business is not going to be back. It's going to be taking about a couple of years to come to a normal occupancy range and it's a fact. We all know that most of the businesses, they really don't have that big of a cream and margin. It's going to be taking a long time. So this help would have, of course, helped us while we were down to about 10, 15%. But now going forward also, it's gonna, there's a lot of backlash for, because of this two, three months. So whatever can help will be great. The option that we were suggesting is if we have incurred cost collecting this pass-down money from our customer. We hardly get cash and checks payments, most of it is all credit card. And most of the business now for a lot of, a lot of us comes from online travel agencies. They all are booked online. And those 10% that we collect is collected with credit card. When we pay you, we are paying you with a check. What we are expecting, one thing that you can look into is, of course, waiving might be difficult. Then we can always look into, if you can do something with our past payment that we have made, maybe you decide how many years you can go back and see, how can you waive or offer that as some kind of a grant that we have paid? Because it's about, you know, for my hotel, I would say it's about six, $5,000 to $6,000, somewhere in that range for last two, three years that we, we are incurring extra to credit card processing companies because we are collecting it for the city, passing it down. And when we are trying to pay, if we can pay by credit card going forward in the future will be a help too, because just whatever it is, it's a small amount, but it can help. Right now, we are trying to cut our landscaper to half frequency, pool guy to half frequency, everything, anything, anything possible. We are trying to cut to save that last dollar. We are running in negative. We are incurring expenses, whether we keep our door open or closed. But we choose to keep it open for safety of our town, employ as many employees we can and then continue to float, float ahead and expect the time will change, but it's going to take a couple of years. It's a fact. Lot of companies already announced no conventions for a couple of years. Lot of companies already say, don't come to work, just work from home. As she said, essential employees are also forced to commute and not stay at the hotel. It's, it's a, it's a tough one compared to a couple of 2001 and 2008. Those years also was really bad for hotel industry, but this is going to be a really bad one. So that's where we are. So we would like to request from us, Hotel Group, if you can, whatever you can accommodate from this and if you can tap into any program that you might know of from state or federal, that will be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Williams, what's our credit card rate here for the city? The process?
So we take Visa, MasterCard, American Express and Discover and depending on what type of card, not only what company you carry your card with, but what type of card you have, our processing rates are different and they, they vary anywhere from 4.9% to 9.8%. So accepting credit card payments can be anywhere from $25,000 to $51,000 a year if we accept a credit card payments for all the business entities. And if I could just touch on a couple of other things, again, this is a pass-through payment and the ordinance does not allow for us to waive this payment. Secondly, I did just mention the credit card fees. I said the annual amounts, but it would be about $6,400 to $13,000 quarterly for these payments. And then finally, the 3% discount that they're talking about. So yes, they may incur credit card payments or credit card fees, but we do as well. And if we gave them... And if we gave them back 3% of, um, their payment, then that would be approximately, based on an average, that would be approximately $12,000 a year in, um, fees that we would return to them. And I don't think I have anything else unless, do you have anything?
The only thing I'd add, Mayor, is we, we are in the process of applying for some community development block grant funding that could provide some assistance to the property owners. Well, that's okay. We are in the process of applying for some, uh, federal community development block grant funds that we would be administering at, at the city that could provide some assistance uh, for, for the property owners, uh, in the future. Um, we just received notice that that funding is available. Um, and we're looking into the application process. Um, and that could be a source of funds for, for you and other businesses in the community. Uh, it's community development block grant. Um, as, community development block grant funds.
We just say CDBG.
CDBG, right. Um, as we develop, um, the guidelines that we'll be using and we hear more about it, we'll make sure and reach out to, to you and the other property owners. Sure, thank you.
Do we have a timeline on this?
Sorry, we, we don't at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
I, Mr. Mayor, I will say, we, we have been waiting for, for that NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability, to come out. It is out, which is encouraging, um, but I, I don't have a, a timeline other than that.
Okay. All right. At this time, um, we have a staff report in front of us. And I need a motion to accept the staff report and any other documents presented by either party into the record. Do you have any other documents to present?
I, yeah, yes. I think it would be appropriate to ask them if they had any documents.
That's what I'm asking.
What you just did, yes.
Uh huh. Yeah, so you have no more documents to present? Okay, City, do you have any documents to present?
Just the document that I added at the beginning of the meeting that shows the breakdown of, um, the $76,000 that was included in the staff report.
You have that right here?
Yes.
Does everyone have that document? Okay, all right. So I would need a motion to accept the staff report and other documents presented by either party into the record. Do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
I will move to accept the staff report and any other documents presented by either party into the record.
Okay, do I have a second?
No, I told Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion by Freya, seconded by Santos, to accept the documents. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, public comment. The hearing will be paused for two minutes to allow for email comments from the public. And the clerk will read into the record any email comments received from the public. So at this time, I'm going to pause the meeting and we'll be back in a few minutes. Director Maloney, do we have any comments? Thank you. Okay, I will now close the public comment section. And do I have any questions or comments by the City Council? And, uh, City Council, uh, and, and council deliberation for the council? Do I have any questions from City Council?
I have a question.
Okay. All right.
No, I'm okay, I just want to make sure.
Are we good?
Um, I just wanted to ask, um, have either, uh, hotel or any of the hotels been, oh, sorry, excuse me. I just wanted to ask, have either of the hotels been looking into programs themselves for, um, to help with assistance and things like that?
Yes, we can.
Yes. And.
Okay, why don't you speak at the, the microphone, please? Okay, Mrs. Santos, could you speak into the mic just a little bit more?
Sorry, I forgot to mention my name last time when I came. I'm Sanjay Patel with La Quinta and Sweets.
Would you ask the question again for us?
Um, my question was to either of the hotels present and any of the other ones. Um, have, have, have any of the hotels been looking into programs themselves for, uh, to help with assistance and things like that?
Yes, we have. Like PPP and EIDL. We all have applied, some of them got it, some of them haven't got it. They don't know if, uh, some of them probably missed the boat because the timing was really aggressive. Lot of people, uh, some of them missed it, some of them got it. That's what it is. So it's PPP and EIDL. Those funds are, if you really look at the expenses, ongoing expenses, fixed expenses, those funds can only help you about a few months. And then it just dries out.
Okay. That's, that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Before we go on to the motion alternatives to discuss, are, yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Freya.
Are, are the hotels and motels listed here the only hotels and motels in Los Banas? Or are there others who are not, who have not joined in in your request?
I think almost everyone is on it, right? Everyone is listed on, on the list, everyone is there, right?
I saw the list there and is, is that, is that all the hotels and motels in town?
Excuse me, I didn't confirm that, but it is. Uh, looking at the list, I, I think everyone is on it.
It is?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
City, can we confirm that?
Yes, it includes every hotel with, and/or motel within the city limits. And like I mentioned, there are 10 hotels listed, nine are currently doing business and therefore we have collected the TOT from nine of the hotels.
Okay, all right. Good. All right, so let's go on. Any other questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Oh, can you, you, is it pressed? Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
What's to prevent any other businesses to come forward and ask for a waiver of their tax, sales tax, anything like that? I know this TOT tax is kind of unique.
So it's a little bit different, however, nothing can stop anybody from asking for a waiver. So the sales tax is a state program and it's ran through the state. So any waiver of the sales tax would have to be through the state. They are doing deferral programs that we talked about last week in the budget workshop. Um, they do have a sales tax deferral program. And if you make up to, I forget the dollar amount off the top of my head, but, um, all but 16 of our businesses, um, are eligible for that. That's the, the, the deferral of 90 days. And then they have a smaller program that's just automatic. Um, so it doesn't stop anybody from asking for a waiver. They could stop, they could ask the council for a reimbursement of sales tax, which I, again, I don't, I mean, I don't know how we would do that. It doesn't address for that type of.
So is there any other tax that we collect directly other than the TOT?
Um, no, all of them are pass through payments through the state or the county.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, one more question for me.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Sorry, Sonia. Uh, one more question. How, um, for the other cities, you said, I believe there was a deferment of up to 30 days, is that correct?
So there were a couple of cities that, yes, deferred. Um, they're talking about the same timeframe that we are here with the, the January through March payment. And some cities deferred it, the payment out as far as July 31st. Again, they didn't waive the fee, they're just allowing them to take more time to pay the fee.
Mayor, before you entertain a decision, could you, um, find out who's on the line today in terms of the appellant's? And then ask them if they have anything to say before you deliberate?
Sure. Who do we have on the line? And is, are there any comments that you would like to make? Who do we have on the line?
Um, who do we happen to have on the phone? And if, do you have any comments to make today?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
And you're, may I ask you what your name is?
Bill.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and the name was what?
Bill, that's with Best Western.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else, anybody else on the line?
Raj.
Do you spell that for us, please?
Was that Raj, Raj?
Any, anybody else on the line besides those two?
Would you ask again, Veronica? Is there anyone else on the line?
Is there anyone else on the line?
That would like to identify themselves.
That would like to identify themselves?
Yeah, Raj.
Okay, so as of right now, we have Raj and Bill, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ask them if they have any comments, just to be clear.
And do either one of you have any comments today?
No.
Okay, so that is no for both of you, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let that be entered into the record. Yes, go ahead. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. You know, I, I understand the difficulty of, you know, these businesses, although I don't own a business and, and I'm sure it, it's, you know, some hard times have been presented. We hear it on the news every day. But the one thing that, you know, I'm struggling with here is that a tax has been collected from an individual with them understanding that they're paying a tax for it to go to a certain entity. If, if I buy something from a merchant or online or what have you, and I pay a tax, whether it's state tax or whatever, if I get that item refunded, that tax comes back to me. And so it, you know, the people who have paid the, these taxes are paying it in good faith that it's going to be used for the intended purpose. And if, if we don't do that, then it seems more honest to me that the tax should go back to the person who paid it. And that's what I struggle with. You know, that's, that's the equitable thing to do is if this council decides that, then that tax should go back to the person who paid it. Now, I, I know that these businesses are asking for assistance. The other thing I'm thinking is if something happens in this country and, you know, this virus continues to move forward and things get shut down, if we make a deferral, how is that going to affect the city's budget? You know, we've already budgeted out what we're, we're supposed to do. We're not getting our, we're not getting our taxes from the state right now. It's, it's well delayed and we're not sure exactly when we're going to get it. So everybody's affected right now. And we have employees that we have to pay and businesses that we have to continue to conduct as well. So that's, you know, those are the two things that I struggle with, is that someone has paid a tax and then we defer it for something that it wasn't intended to do. And, you know, if I paid a tax on something and, and it doesn't go for what it's supposed to do, then I, I would be a little bit discouraged about that. So I just wanted to put that comment out there, that when you pay a tax, it should go for what it's intended to do. And if it doesn't, then the person who paid it should get their money back.
We all build costs into our business. We build the cost for the credit card, we build the cost for the supplies, we build the cost for maintenance, we build the class for, cost for personnel. And that was a cost that was built in. And if, if, if that cost is, is not there, then yes, and then people were charged something, uh, that they shouldn't have been charged for. And, uh, and when we do business, our room rates are based on what it costs us to operate our businesses. Okay, are there any other comments?
Uh, one last comment, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
My comment is, and I have to say as well, I, I struggle with the fact that, um, the, the, um, the taxes are only when people are present. We have people at present at these hotels, so, um, that's wonderful that we said that going on. But, um, I struggle with the fact that it's, if this is unprecedented, as I'm sure everyone's heard a million times over. And, but at the same time, we're, we are hurting as well, the city in general is hurting. So I just struggle with the fact that, um, this is something that from the get, I mean, essentially has been known. Um, there's a need to be done. But the fact is that, you know, as a city, we, we are here for our residents here, for our businesses. But, um, yeah, it's just, I mean, for me personally, I have to say that I, um, I could, for, I wouldn't see it more than 30 days, but I would personally be for the ferment. But, um, I, I, just as of right now, I, I don't see it being waived or even, um, not, not even paid. So that's where I stand with that, yeah.
Thank you. All right, any comments? Mr. Freya, anymore? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Uh, yeah, we, it was collected with the intent that would be paid to the city. And so, uh, it needs to be paid to the city. I don't have a problem with a short deferral period, uh, to give you time to maybe, maybe give us time to find that CDBG funding. Um, but nonetheless, it was, it was a fee that was charged, a tax that was charged, uh, on the, on, to each, uh, customer. Then they knew it was going to be coming to the city and that was the assumption at the time. So it, we, we still need to collect it. I don't mind a, a, a short deferral if council wanted to do that. But when, but a waiver, I don't, I can't entertain a waiver.
The fees have been paid already.
Oh, right, or a refund.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Okay, so why don't I do this, just to be perfectly clear? Um, I have, I have three alternatives and I will read those first. Motion to continue the hearing to allow for presentation for additional information. That's one option. Motion to grant the appeal and direct finance department to waive the TOT tax collected from January 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2020, from each of the appellant's. And C, motion to deny the appeal and affirm the decision And C, motion to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the tax administrator, city manager, bearing in mind that, that these fees have already been paid. So I'm going to ask, is there anyone interested in making a motion to continue the hearing to allow presentation of additional information?
If I may ask, Mayor, what additional information would we be possibly getting? Is there any?
If, if they have any additional information that, that they'd like to present to support their case.
Okay.
Okay, not seeing anyone. I will go to item B, option B. Motion to grant the appeal and direct finance department to waive the TOT tax collected from January 1, 2020 through March 31, 2020, from each of the appellant's. Okay? C, motion to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the tax administrator, city manager. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry? Mr. Freya was first there. Oh, no, 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 Mr., Mrs. Lewis. I'm, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept letter number C, as stated by the mayor to present to the council for a vote.
Okay, and I will read that again. Motion to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the tax administrator, city manager. Do I have a second? Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motion by Lewis, second by Jones, to approve motion to deny appeal and affirm the decision to tax administrator, city manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, let the record show four yes, one no. Motion carried, item C. Meeting adjourned at 4:47.